Eileen, can we have the opening statement, please?
Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, November 27, 2023. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31, 2023, the copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on March 31, 2023, the copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on March 31, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider when reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, you may. Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Stanton has been excused. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Rubell.
Here.
And Chairman Seiya.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, can we have a swearing-in of the professionals, please?
Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you?
I do.
Charles Culliver?
Jennifer Beam.
Professionals are sworn, Mr. Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Okay, item five on the agenda, approval of minutes, regular meeting, September 18, 2023. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, Rubell, and Seiya. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Yes.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, item number six on the agenda, vouchers. Are there any vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Do we have any correspondence, item seven?
Yeah, I just, I don't really have a letter, but I spoke to the attorney for GF United, which was the second application on today's agenda, and the Asbury Park Press didn't get their notice in on time, so they're going to be rescheduled with notice, so they will not be heard tonight, and we don't have to make any announcement because they're going to be noticed. I also had given the board some meeting dates. I don't know if you want to discuss them tonight or wait until our next meeting, but we're running out of time.
I thought I replied with one date, or were they all good? Did everyone take a look at them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've known.
You know, there's a few holidays, like one week Passover begins on 4/22, which would be our second meeting in April. October 14 should be a day, and that's typically the second Monday, so that's always a problem, so it's October 7. November 11 is Veterans Day, so it's November 4 instead, and then December 9 and December 23, which I don't know if anybody wants to come in on the 23rd, so.
That's what I was asking. Can you move that one back a week?
We can. So that would be, I think, the 16th.
Right, and that was the only other one. Other than that, I believe we're all good. You've got us covered, Eileen. Thank you.
Okay. And then the only other thing is to just to remind everybody for the chairman, vice chair, and secretary that the Rules Committee meeting is next Monday at 6 o'clock at the Ivy League.
Okay.
Okay? I will make the reservations tomorrow.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Okay, so anyone that's here for case number BA 13-15A-2, GF United Realty LLC, this application's going to be carried, and it'll be further noticed.
Rescheduled with notice.
Rescheduled with further notice. Thank you. Okay, resolutions on the agenda. Item eight, case number BA 23-08, Kenneth DeBloy and Lisa Dumore. Resolution granting bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling on a nine-conforming lot. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Stanton, and Seiya. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Hughes.
Second.
Orozco. Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay, then, applications before the board. Case number BA 23-19, Domenico Coletti. Bulk variance for a single-family dwelling on lot with insufficient frontage and width. Description: Application of Domenico Coletti as applicant and Michelle Parks as owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling with an associated driveway, private well, septic system, and lot grading improvements on a lot with insufficient lot width and frontage in the ARE2 zone on premises known as Block 176, Lot 4.01, 379 Buckaloo Road. Expiration date: February 16, 2024.
Mr. Coletti, you can come up.
Good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Who do we have in front of us today?
Domenico Coletti. I'm the applicant.
Okay, welcome, sir. Do you have any professionals that are going to be?
No, sir.
Providing testimony? Just the, okay, very good. Andy, we're good?
We need to swear in, Mr. Coletti.
Then let's do that. Thank you.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name from the record, spell your last.
Domenico Coletti, C-O-L-L-E-T-T-I.
Mr. Coletti is sworn in.
Thank you. Mr. Coletti, you're welcome to proceed.
Okay, thank you. So I created a brief synopsis of the application that we're going to go through.
Okay, do you want to bring the mic closer to you so everybody could hear you?
Is that better?
That's perfect. Thank you.
I'll speak up a little bit. My apologies. So this application is for C variance on Block 176, Lot 4.01, which is noncompliant with the current lot width regulations, specifically schedule three bulk and dimensional requirements for lot width per Chapter 188-52.
Mr. Chair, I probably can just summarize this a lot quicker.
Go ahead.
So this property was subdivided, what, in the 80s?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. It was a legal subdivision. The lot was created, and the zoning was different, so it was conforming lot when it was created. We have a provision in our ordinance that grandfather's in the area, right? So it was a one-acre zone, now it's a two-acre zone, so the area's not an issue. The frontage and the width are noncompliant with the ARE2 zone. However, the applicant sent buy-sell letters to his neighbors to say, can I make this lot compliant, or do you want to buy my lot? They got no responses, so this categorizes under a C1 hardship variance for frontage and width. They are deficient, minimally deficient in both of those categories, but they are, they would clearly fall under the C1 hardship category. They cannot make these, sorry, conditions compliant.
All right, so Jen? Would, under the one-acre zoning, was this a conforming lot then?
It was.
It was? Okay. I remember the days we re-upped all the acreage up in the north of Howell.
So, and Jen cited the, Jen cited the lottery grandfathering, so there's Section 188-52 to do. It basically says any lot created prior to 1981 that service, or proposed to be serviced by private septic system, the minimum lots area requirement is 40,000 square feet. They're over an acre, I think it's like 1.3 acres, plus or minus. Here, there's also another grandfather ordinance that says anything that's existed prior to 2008, there's really only technically a lot frontage requirement of 200 feet where 150 feet exist. I also cited a lot width, that's under the current regulations, but, you know, I just put it in there for a technicality. Really, it's, a lot frontage is what they need. And just to give the board some clarity of the seven or eight properties to the north of this, the lot frontages are 127.97, 201 feet, 100 feet, 103 feet, 100 feet, 100 feet. That's just per the tax map. So, you know, there's a number of properties north of this on Buckaloo Road which also don't have frontage that meet the requirement. Anytime you have a lot that doesn't meet the width of the frontage requirement, you look at the setback requirements and whether they're meeting the side yard check requirements, especially since the width is deficient. The plot plan that they provided shows it complies with all bulk standard requirements. Technically, it's grandfathered, and 2008, there weren't any building a lot coverage requirements. However, with the current standards, what they're proposing is compliant with those. The driveway that's being proposed complies with our driveway requirements in terms of the pavement section, the length, it's over 150 feet, so it's paved, it's got a minimum 30 feet for a side entry driveway for turnaround. The only waivers that they do need is providing curb and sidewalk along the property frontage. I will say that, looking at street view and aerials, it doesn't appear that there's any curb or sidewalk on that side of Buckaloo Road along any of the adjacent frontages. Obviously, you know, it's the board's discretion on whether, you know, they want to require sidewalk or make them contribute to a sidewalk fund. I'll leave that up to your discussion. The really, the only engineering comments I had of note was anytime we're seeing a septic system, especially in the front yard, we want to see, like, the grading softened a little bit to kind of reduce the appearance of, like, a mounded septic system. There's, like, some swales on the sides of the septic that I think could probably be softened, so it's not, like, that mounded look. And then also their drywall sizing, they do have one proposed, and I just had a little technical comment with the calculation, it just needs to be expanded a little bit to comply with the water quality storm. And then, for the applicant's benefit, I cited a number of ordinance sections, you know, I think you're a contract purchaser in this instance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so obviously, they get approval on this, you either build it, or, you know, the lot gets sold to someone else. I just wanted it to be as part of a resolution, you know, there's requirements for fences in front yards, you know, accessory structures can't be in front yard area. There's all these code sections. If you do, the board does act affirmatively, whoever submits a plot plan to the town will have to show anything they want and get their appropriate permits for that. And then obviously, the biggest piece of the puzzle is Monmouth County Board of Health for the septic. Prior to any plot plans, you'll have to get the approval for that. And then also, you're over 5,000 square foot, so you got to get real soils approval for the block rating disturbance. I think that pretty much summarizes the application in its entirety.
So Charlie, per the plan, is that the perfect footprint that we're looking at?
It's a modest footprint of the house. It's not an oversized house. It fits on the property. I think what Charlie's saying is that he just wants the board to condition, if they act in the affirmative, that the engineer, Rob Siv, who we've seen here many times, to work with Charlie's office to soften the grading. I would recommend, even though we are technically grandfathered, that if you're going to consider the relief on the frontage, you also grant the relief on the width, just to make sure he doesn't wind up with problems moving forward. But other than that, it's a modest-sized footprint, it's not inconsistent with the area. This lot was created by subdivision, they provided the resolution as part of our package, so there's really not much else, and it's a hardship. So there's a different burden associated with a hardship variance versus a C2 variance. A C2, you have to do a balance. A C1, they cannot comply, which is why they sent those buy-sell letters, they got, you got no response from the buy-sell letters, correct?
Correct.
So they did their due diligence to say, do you want to buy my property? Can I buy your property? They got no response. Therefore, they qualify under hardship, they cannot comply, based upon the fact that this is an undeveloped lot in a primarily developed area. So my recommendation, I take no exception to the relief that they've been asked, they've asked for, which is, in my opinion, frontage and width. I would do the width just to be safe. You know, with all the conditions that Charlie cited in his letter, I would take no exception if the board were acting the affirmative.
Thank you, Jen.
To just add a little bit further to that, not to take any of your planning.
That's okay.
But it is somewhat of a regularly shaped lot in that the width of the lot kind of tapers as you go further back. If it was a square parcel, you know, you'd probably would have 150 feet across. That also does one beneficial thing, is it kind of forces the development closer to Buckaloo Road, you know what I mean? So you could comply with the setback requirements, helps reduce the disturbance amount of tree clearing and things like that, so, you know, granting that relief kind of forces them to keep it up front, so I really take no issue with what's being proposed.
So Mr. Coletti, you plan on building this house?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm living there.
Great.
Did you say you're going to be living there?
Yes.
John, you have any?
Nothing.
Okay. Board members? Go ahead, Mr. Barillo.
The plan's call for 35-foot tall house, is that, is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
That's the max.
Charlie, on your chart on Section B, number three, maximum building height 30 feet?
Yeah, so there's a grandfather in provision, so any existing planted lot prior to 2008 are subject to whatever those bulk standards were in the time when the zone, or when the ordinance changed the ARE1, 2 through 6 standards. I think prior to that, the building height was 30 feet, two and a half stories. When it was changed in 2008, it was 35 feet. Either way, I mean, I think the structure is modest in height, so even, you know, if you apply to 30-foot standards, I think it's below that. And we measure building height not to the top of the structure, it's the average of the ridge in the east, so even with that, you know, I think it complies with what the ordinance requirement is.
Not just so on the building plans, that it was 35 feet?
Right, but that's to the top.
That's to the top.
Like, you have to take it to the midpoint of the roof based upon the existing grade. So it's not just, it's not just the architectural plans which don't factor in the grade and the midpoint of the roof.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Ryan? Everybody's good? Okay? So we're going to open it up to public then, eh?
I'll make a motion to open the public, sir.
We got a motion to open the public. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Coletti, you could sit here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Eileen, we're open to public.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up to members of the public. If anyone has any questions or comments, you can step up to the podium. You will need to give your name and address and be sworn in.
Hi, Christine Barrese, 380 Buckaloo Road.
You need to speak right into the mic, I need to get you on the record.
Hi, how are you? Christine Barrese, 380 Buckaloo Road. I just.
Barrese, can you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear that testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Absolutely.
Can you just spell your last name for me, too?
B-A-R-R-E-S-E.
Ms. Barrese is sworn in, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to have a couple things clarified. We just wanted to come because we got letters, and we just wanted to hear what was being proposed, to understand it, because if we get a letter in the mail, I feel like, you know, and it's saying it's, there's something on it with the frontage and the width, it's concerning to us, that's all, as neighbors.
They're required to denoise everybody within 200 feet of the property.
Correct. But you mentioned something about notices went out with no response from neighbors and that we.
The buy-sell letters went out to the immediate adjacent, they don't have to go out to everyone within 200 feet, they have to go out to the adjacent property.
Oh, okay.
If you're not adjacent, you giving them property is not going to help them solve the frontage or the width situation.
Okay, that makes sense. I just wanted that clarified. And just one other thing, would the septic and well or anything affect the surrounding neighbors?
They will not. They have to get approved by Monmouth County Board of Health.
And Board of Health dictates separation distances from property lines, from adjacent wells and septics on adjacent properties, so that's Board of Health jurisdiction. If they can't get Board of Health approval, then they'd have to return back to the board for amended approval to put in public sanitary at that point, so.
Okay. That's it. That's all I wanted to ask.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone else.
I'll make a motion to close, sir.
We have a motion to close the public.
I'll second that.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Eileen, we're closed to public.
The public portion of the hearing has now been closed by the chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Coletti, you want to give us some summation?
So, you know, in summary, this, my wife and I are former residents of Howell Township, and since then, it's been our dream to build a home in our lives and raise our family in this township. For the last several years, we've been saving every penny we possibly can to make our dream a reality, and that's why we're here today, in pursuit of that, and we feel very lucky and blessed to be able to present our case today, and we thank everybody for affording us this opportunity. Having said that, in summary of the actual case, this is a pre-existing nonconformity. This property has not merged, it was a conforming subdivision with approvals, and the property owner did not create the hardship, and we hope that the township will agree that the plan proposed is a better plan than if the variance were not granted.
Thank you, Mr. Coletti. So.
Let's just, real quick, do we need to clarify the waiver on sidewalks before we see what our consensus is on that?
That's a good question. Charlie, you mentioned sidewalks on this property. Is there adjacent sidewalks?
I do not believe so.
There's not.
All right.
Oh, yeah. Pretty rural part of.
Right, that's Buckaloo Road, yep.
I would, and you know me, I'm not one to recommend it.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting, Jen.
I would recommend granting the waiver and allowing them to pay into the fund. There's no sidewalks there, I don't foresee any sidewalks going over there anytime soon. In this particular instance, you know me, I'm not one to say that, it has to start somewhere usually, but this is not the place for it to start.
Got it. Thank you.
Is that your question?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just cleaning my throat.
Board members, any other questions or, what's the pleasure of the board?
Excuse me.
Mr. Coletti wants to.
Can I say one thing, please, in regard to the waiver? To the requested waiver? If you do choose to grant us the waiver, I would also ask, I would also ask relief from submitting or paying into the sidewalk trust fund.
We can't do that here. You have to go to the governing body. We can't, this board can't grant the relief from the payment. They can grant you relief from having to put in the sidewalk, and what they can say is you get the waiver and you have to pay to the fund. You don't want to pay to the fund, you got to go to the Township Council and plead your case there. That's where you have to do that. They can't grant you relief from that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Mr. Barillo.
If I remember correctly, the master bedroom looked like it was going to have two walk-in closets?
Correct.
One's rather really large.
It is.
Okay. Any ideas about making that another bedroom?
No, sir, that's my wife's closet.
So, tell my wife.
So just to clarify that, the second walk-in closet, that's much larger than the other, right? It's only accessible through the master suite, right? There's no separate hallway where it could be converted to a separate?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Attic and basement, no plans of?
Typical attic basement, no bedrooms proposed or anticipated.
John?
They would be restricted by Board of Health anyway. The septic design is based on the number of bedrooms, so they, once that's in place, you're pretty much stuck with what you have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question on the sidewalk waiver. Would it be appropriate for this board to recommend to the governing body?
Nope.
Or say we, we can't do anything like, say we, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? All right, then, what's the pleasure of the board here?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, based on, of course, the relief for the frontage and the width as recommended, and straightening out the, whatever the calculation on the drywells with Charlie, and softening the septic, and the waiver on the sidewalks. With all those, I'd like to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barillo. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries. Applications approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Have a nice holiday.
Mr. Coletti, you can call me and I'll explain the next part, okay?
Okay. So then, when we look at the agenda, we, before we close for the night, we went to the League of Municipalities a week or two ago, and on the agenda, something that we learned was the M4S of 2023. And I was just going to ask Mr. Cunliffe to just give us a little overview of what that is, because, for our education. So, Charlie, you got it.
I think, Mr. Chairman, you know I like to talk storm management, but I'll try to keep it as brief as I can.
Yep.
So going back to the 70s, federal government EPA enacted Clean Water Act, come into the later 90s, early 2000s, they went a little bit further, amended those rules, that created That created the municipal MS4 permit requirements. Those officially became active in 2004. MS4 is municipal separate storm sewer systems. So basically, it regulates municipal stormwater discharges to water bodies throughout the state. 2004, there was two different tier designations, Tier A and Tier B of the 500-plus municipalities. I think that's how many there are. 120 of them were Tier B. Howe has always been a Tier A. The cutoff tended to do with, like, population. The thought being, if you're over a certain population, you know, there's more development, more impervious coverage, more maintained grass areas, more nutrients going to your water courses. So what they did was, it kind of put the onus on municipalities to make sure that, one, they adopted ordinances for, like, containerized yard waste, you know? You shouldn't be taking your municipal house waste or your yard waste and putting it in a storm inlet that's going to go to a downstream water body, right? Regulated and illicit connection. You shouldn't hook your sanitary drain line into the storm sewer, right? Because it's going to go into a downstream water body. Come 2021, in the last year, the state updated their stormwater management rules, went a little bit further with green infrastructure requirements, things like that. They also took the Tier A requirements, which is, you know, the burden of the municipality for making sure that private property owners' developments are compliant with all these regulations. They upped the ante. You know, municipal street sweeping has to be done X amount of times a year, things like that. Where did we fall into all of that, right? So the municipality, they're the ones that has a permit with the state, and they're responsible for controlling major developments in their municipality. That's where we come in, planning and zoning board. Someone comes in, they're exceeding the state's stormwater thresholds for major development, one-acre disturbance, quarter-acre impervious surface or regulated motor vehicle surface. That's where I come in and do the review, make sure they're complying with green infrastructure, quality, quantity, recharge, all those things. If you've seen, read my letters, you can see sometimes there might be a second or third letter. A lot of those times, why they haven't gotten to the board until the third letter is because their stormwater doesn't comply with those standards. The reasoning being, the township is the permit holder. The state doesn't audit every five years of... They cherry pick a certain number of those applications to make sure that the town's doing their due diligence. If they find one of those that doesn't meet the standards, the developer doesn't get a fine. The township potentially gets a fine. So that's where we come into it. And then, the last thing that I'll wrap it up is, going back to 2004, maintenance has always been an important component of all these stormwater management infrastructure basins, stormwater basins. Now that it's green infrastructure, they rely heavily on infiltration, the vegetation in the basins for nutrient removal and things like that. The onus is put on the municipality to make sure that all these private developments, residential, commercial, are maintaining their basins. So that's why every time we do a resolution of approval, we require them to record the operation of maintenance manual for the basin as part of their deed. It specifically lists the property owner as the responsible party for maintaining that. So if they're not doing their maintenance requirements and everything like that on an annual basis, the township has the ability to assess, you know, a tax lien on the property owner for not maintaining those basins. Also, what it does is grants the municipality, like, either a blanket easement or a dedicated easement to that stormwater management basin. So if it's an immediate safety concern, you know, someone let three feet of sediment accumulated in their basin, so now that three foot of storage that was supposed to be for stormwater is not there, and it's now just flowing downstream to the neighborhood property, the township has a right to go on that property and do corrective or preventative maintenance. So that's where we fall into it, you know? Each year, the town submits a report to DEP. They review it, and we provide a list of all the major developments that we've approved, and, you know, the onus is put on me as your professional to make sure that they're complying with these requirements. So if you see a second or third letter, it's not just because I'm being a stickler. It's, you know, there is some real-world implications to the township. Sometimes it ends up being monetary, and no one wants to pay more taxes, you know, each year, so...
We appreciate you, Charlie. Thank you so much. It's all good. John, it's... We're on top of that, right, where we have blockage and clogs and overflow and... Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You recently attended the Shade Tree Federation's annual conference, and they discussed that as well. And just two thoughts to throw in. One is that the Shade Tree Commission is doing bioswales in rainwater gardens, but it was recommended that instead of recommending, and I'm going to say this wrong, detention or retention basins for these large properties where they're putting in four or five of them, that one or two might be a rainwater garden instead of a...
They have to be.
They have to be rainwater gardens instead of...
Rain gardens or some kind of green infrastructure.
Yes, yes. So previously, the grass bottom infiltration... Or, sorry, grass bottom basin where you could have a control structure common with the bottom. So basically, anything going into the system, no matter what, is always flowing out, albeit at a regulated flow. Now, you have to have your orifice set up above a certain height, the water quality storm, so you're getting some infiltration. So, you know, it could be a sand bottom infiltration basin. You could have a bio-retention basin that's your planted bottom basins. So there's a prescriptive menu in the stormwater management manual and rules through the state that tell you what you can do, and it's up to the applicant. You know, we can try to push them one way or the other, but at the end of the day, if they're... As long as they're using one of those methods and they're meeting all the design criteria, you know, it's on them. But what I will say is, sand bottom basins, you know, you're raking it once a year to make sure it's not growing grass and compacting or anything like that. With the bio-retention basins, you know, if you're not in there pruning and all that kind of stuff, and you get overgrowth, you know, it's tough, so... And it all comes back to the municipality to make sure that they're doing it. So try to keep it as simple as possible sometimes as we can, so...
The operations and maintenance.
Yeah.
And I do want to add the... Those rain gardens that are so epically popular with the DEP look like crap. So just so you know, they're not aesthetic. Like, they don't look nice. They... They're not something that's going to be beautiful. It's not going to be like this beautiful vegetated thing. It's... They're not aesthetic, so...
Well, take offense. The one that we put in at Monmouth Ridings is... It's actually a bioswale.
That's different. That's different, right?
It's a solution, yeah.
Right, so a full-on rain garden?
Right.
Which uses specifically prescribed plantings, and then, like, no interference, winds up looking kind of swampish? And so it works from a DEP standpoint, but from a... Like, I just want to advise you, they're absolutely allowed to do them, but aesthetically, they're not great. So then, we're going to wind up getting, like, complaints about how they look. So I just want you guys to... Because I watched it in Neptune at the Midtown School. They put in a rain garden in the front. It was all great, great, great. And then when it actually grew in, it looks like a swamp. And now everyone's complaining that there's mosquitoes, and there's other issues, and there's problems with it. So it's definitely a balance, for sure.
Point taken. It requires maintenance.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Across the board with all of it. It's only as good as you maintain it.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Eileen, next meeting is December 11th.
And then we have another meeting the following week, on the 18th.
Are there applications on both of those right now?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Eileen, we're shutting down.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.